I call the March 5th, 2025 Apple Valley Planning Commission Meeting to order. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, with your approval or permission, we would suggest or recommend that we move Item 4B, the Planning Commission Annual Report, down to 7A. And then we'll start with the short presentation on the report, followed by the Apple Valley Bike and Ped Plan, and then review of upcoming schedules. If you would so make that motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Scanlon, second by Commissioner Sandel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any changes from the Commissioners? Can I get a move for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Scanlon and seconded by Commissioner Halas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a Commissioner or a citizen requests to have any items separately considered. It will then be moved to the land use action items for consideration. Can I get a motion of approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scanlon, I believe it was seconded by Commissioner Halas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That brings us to number four, the annual business meeting. So for 4A, we are going to be nominating and approving officers. Do I have any nominations?
Madam Chair, I nominate current Chair Kurtz for the chair position.
Second. Or is that doing?
Any other nominations?
Madam Chair, I nominate Commissioner Schindler for Secretary.
Any other nominations for Secretary? Anybody want to nominate for the Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I nominate myself for Vice Chair position.
Are there any other nominations? If not, can I get an approval? Or, yeah. Right? Or do we vote first? Do we vote first or do we approve it first? We approve, right?
Prove the motion and then you can enact the assuage of officers in one motion.
Can I get approval?
I would move to approve the nominating slate of officers.
Okay.
Second.
So the approval was made by Commissioner Mahalawald and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Are there any other discussions about it? If not, if in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries to Chair Kurtz, Vice Chair Scanlon, Secretary Schindler.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone. That will bring us then to 5B, which is our public hearings. And our public hearing tonight is the Bethel Assemblies of God Church Wireless Communication Tower. And we have Sidney Stroing as the presenter on that.
Good evening, Chair Kurtz and Commissioners. I will.
But I do have to do the first. We now will open the public hearing for Agenda Item 5A. The affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the Planning Department. Everyone wishing to speak tonight at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster. Please include your name and address so that accurate records can be maintained. We will begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment on the proposal's conformance with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public.
Thank you, Chair Kurtz. Tonight I will be presenting to you the request for a conditional use permit for a wireless communication.
Can you speak louder?
Sure. Tonight I will be presenting to you a conditional use permit request for a wireless communications tower at Bethel Assemblies Church. I do want to note, we did provide an updated resolution to you all. The reason for the update was because we did have the city attorney review the draft resolution. The changes that were made were mainly formatting changes and then a couple of additional clarifications to a few suggested conditions. Specifically, the request is for an 86-foot tall wireless communications tower at the existing Bethel Assemblies of God Church property. I believe it is otherwise known as Bethel Rock Church. The existing site is located just west of Cedar Avenue. The proposed tower would be located in the south end of the parcel near 143rd Street For some background, a similar conditional use permit was approved for the same property in 2017. The previous cell tower was proposed to be located in a large curb island near the center of the property. A conditional use permit lapses if a building permit is never issued, and for this proposed tower, a building permit was not issued, so therefore it lapsed. The zoning of the property is institutional, and a tower is a conditional use allowed in this zone. There are a number of performance standards that regulate towers. The performance standards that towers must adhere to are set out in Section 155.358 of City Code. The applicant has submitted a memo that includes details on meeting each performance standard. There are three main categories that are reviewed when considering a communications tower: co-location requirements, construction requirements, and then general area standards like setbacks and height. The memo and plans provided generally meet all of the requirements set out for towers. One performance standard that staff has suggested conditions for is related to Clause B8 of Section 155.358. This would include requirements related to color, screening, and landscaping. I will go over these identified areas of concerns as well as the suggested conditions later in the presentation. The submitted site plan shows the tower location, the 30-by-25-foot equipment pad area, and the driveway access for the tower. The setbacks for the tower are based on an engineered breakpoint. The submitted documents identify the breakpoint as half of the tower height, or 43 feet. Based on this breakpoint, the required setback to the property lines is a minimum of 64.5 feet. All property line setbacks are met. There is an additional setback to structures on neighboring properties. The minimum distance based on the breakpoint would be 86 feet. The closest neighboring structure to the proposed tower would be 153 feet. Additionally, the site plan shows a gravel driveway. I want to note that the gravel material is not a permitted material for a driveway under City Code. A condition is included in the draft resolution to require the driveway to be paved. Lastly, the city requires sidewalk installation when development occurs. There is a sidewalk gap along 143rd Street, and we are seeking to fill this gap. There's a condition provided in this engineering memo that would require a sidewalk installation essentially along the south property line of this site, so basically running from here to here. The proposed tower is designed to be a monopole with the antennas mounted flush to the tower. This is the preferred design per the tower performance standards. I want to point out, a couple of staff identified concerns regarding the pad area and the ground equipment. The code allows the city to require screening of the base of the tower via landscaping and fencing. The tower is within a wooded area, but as you can see, it would be visible from the roadway here along 143rd Street. Staff is suggesting a condition to address this by requiring year-round landscaping adjacent to 143rd Street. Additionally, the proposed fence is shown as a chain link material. Staff recommends a condition to update the fence to a solid opaque material to further screen the ground equipment. Lastly, the color of the proposed tower is shown to be a color that would match the church. The church buildings appear to have a couple of colors used throughout the buildings, and staff is unsure which color the applicant is referring to. We would like to further review this to ensure that it would blend in with the surrounding wooded area of the proposed site. The recommended draft conditions provided are on the following slides. This is just a reminder to the Commission and to the public that the city may only place reasonable conditions that are associated with the required performance standards as described in City Code. A bulk of the conditions shown on this slide are sort of more of our boilerplate conditions related to conditional use permits, as well as CUP for a tower. I have Condition 7 here in bold, just to note that this is where the requirement for sidewalk installation is included in the resolution. I want to touch on a couple of conditions on this slide that are more site-specific for this specific tower conditional use permit. I have mentioned most, if not all, of these throughout the presentation, but as a summary, we have recommended conditions related to year-round screening, maintenance of existing trees to ensure long-term screening, updating the fencing material, paving of the driveway, and then a condition related to the tower color. I'd be happy to go over any of the specifics of these conditions if there are any questions.
Thank you, Sidney.
We have received a couple of mailed public comments that have been provided to you tonight and will be included as part of the public hearing. The recommended action for tonight would be to open the public hearing, receive comments, and then close the public hearing. Would you have the applicant here tonight, and then I can stand for any questions as well? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sidney. Commissioners, anybody have questions for Sidney? Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, Sidney, with the previous approval that we had done back in, I think it was 2017, do you recall what the height of the pole at that time was for that project and color selection that we approved?
I don't recall the color, but I can say that the height was about 84 feet. It was just slightly under what the proposed height for this tower is, which is 86 feet.
Okay. Additionally, is there any, this appears to be a number of them existing in mature trees, any disruption or removal of trees?
Commissioner Kurtz, Commissioner Scanlon, the proposed plans do show a slight removal of vegetation in the area, which is why we have included a condition for a tree preservation concept, which is required as part of the Natural Resources Management Permit.
Okay. Yeah, and if this goes forward, I think it might be prudent, too, to take a look at, with the density of everything and the trees that are existing there, that there's some protective measures that would take place to protect the trees that are going to remain so they're not damaged during the construction. And the other thing I had was for the applicant, so wait till they do their presentation.
Sidney, I just want to echo that I think, too, that the chain link fence is a good idea to be replaced. I think the opaque, solid fence will look much better and cover more stuff, and of course, the paved road. Commissioner Pruitt?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Kurtz. Sidney, just curious, and it's a short drive to the tower, and I understand there'd be a fence around it. Any consideration of a gate or something to prevent this from being a turnaround in that area? Don't know that it's obligated to have something like that. Just curious, anything to prevent people from kind of turning into that drive?
Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Pruitt, I will say, I do not believe we have a specific requirement related to that. I do know that this specific driveway is meant only for access related to maintenance and any other, you know, tower construction-type use. There may be some sort of signage that could be included, and I would have to defer to the applicant to see if that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sandel?
Chair Kurtz, Sidney, I echo some of the similar concerns as Commissioner Scanlon with the trees. It looks, based on the drawings, that they are trying to place it where they have to remove as little as possible of the trees, but I would just like that to be confirmed, that that is what the attempt is, to remove as few trees as possible when that's being done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mahalawald?
Chair Kurtz, Sidney, just kind of a follow-up with respect to the tree preservation. Does that include replacing trees that may become diseased or damaged?
Yeah. Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Mahalawald, we do have a condition related to maintaining existing trees and then including the additional year-round screening that would be installed as well. I believe the landscaping would be reviewed, and we do have a condition in the engineering memo that's related to Natural Resources Department, having final approval of the landscaping plan.
Okay. It just wasn't clear to me in the language there that that would include potentially replacing trees that might become diseased or damaged in any way.
The intention of Condition Number 9 would be related to maintaining those existing trees that do provide the screening to the surrounding residential specifically. So for instance, if one of those trees were to die, fall over, whatever it would be, the intention would be that the property owner shall maintain that so that the screening doesn't go away one day.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, looks like no one else. Can we have the applicant up?
My name is Blair. I'm with Beal Consulting, and we are the consulting company that works with Verizon, Shepherds, and through the leasing and the zoning process and finding sites for the tower. So I'll start by just addressing a few of the things we just talked about. The opaque fencing, what we plan to change that to is a composite wood material, so it looks like wood, but it doesn't age in the same way that cedar would. Tree removal, we don't plan on removing any mature trees. Often, there's trimming that's required, but we don't plan on doing any significant tree removal. And typically, we would install Arborvitie or whatever we are directed to facing 143rd Street. Yeah. So this site, it's basically, the intent is to offload capacity from six other sites that are in and around Apple Valley, about within a mile, two and a mile and a half of each direction, north, southeast, west. So the primary goal is not just to add coverage, but it in fact increases the efficacy of those surrounding six sites by, it's like adding another wireless router to your house, very similar to that. And a little bit more history on the 2017 conditional use permit. It's very common in this industry for, you know, sites to be entitled, designed, go through the entire process, and then get put on hold. So that's what happened in this case. And the church, Bethel Assemblies, or Bethel's Rock, purchased it from the previous church, so it was at that point that we decided mutually to move it down into the wooded area. And I would be happy to field any questions.
Thank you, Blair. I have a few questions. First question is, just out of curiosity, so I can learn about this a little bit, is how many towers do you need for good coverage? I mean, like a Verizon tower, within five miles, 10 miles for good coverage? What is usually the ratio on that?
Yeah, so it's a really variable question, and it has to do with what type of service you're using. So just like a call and a text can be several miles, but when you get down to providing fast data and home internet, it can be, you know, upwards of a mile, depending on how dense the population is. So Apple Valley, especially in this area, is very residential, you know, a dense suburban area. So those surrounding six towers I mentioned are not adequately serving the area. So I know it's not a specific answer to that question, but that's kind of how it's evaluated.
No, it's good. It's just that you'd be kind of tiring to see so many towers every mile or something.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I was, so Verizon has their own tower. So other companies, do they, like AT&amp;T, do they come in? Or AT&amp;T, is there even AT&amp;T anymore?
Yeah.
Sprint or whatever, do they have to have their own separate tower also?
Yeah, you're referring to what's called co-location, which is when multiple carriers join on one tower. That's very common. That's actually the first thing that we look at when we're looking for sites. Our last resort is to build a new tower. It's the most expensive way to create the infrastructure you need, so we look first for existing towers. There's nothing in this area, so that's why we're building a new tower. As part of our application, Verizon committed to allowing other carriers onto their tower as well.
Thank you. Two more questions, and I'll be done. I have a couple of letters here that concern citizens are about exposure, RF exposure. Would you relate on that?
Yeah, so the FCC is part of Verizon and all the wireless carriers licenses. They govern the amount of emissions that they can create with their sites. So it's Verizon's job to design their sites to comply with that, which they do. It's well within those emission limits. But the short answer is that's governed by the federal government. So it's not a, it's one, not a jurisdictional question, and in terms of specific RF safety, I can't really comment on any definitive information one way or the other.
Okay, so there is exposure, is kind of what you're saying then?
Yeah, everyone's exposed when you pick up the phone and put it to your head. Yeah, so giving, yeah, giving any, you know, specific data, I try not to get, you know, I'm not knowledgeable enough to do that. I'm not a doctor or a researcher. So what I can say is that there's, you know, strict and clear guidelines that the federal government gives, and that's what they operate within.
The last one was just a little bit about the wind and the ice buildup and stuff. So has that ever happened before with a tower, with the 1.5 inches of ice and then the wind of 50 miles per hour?
Has it fallen? It's extremely rare, especially for a tower of this height. You often see that with larger towers, especially guide towers that don't have as much steel, but in this situation, it's highly unlikely that it would fall. That's why we design it with that breakpoint, because it doesn't fall, it doesn't rip out of the foundation and fall like a tree, it collapses on itself.
On itself.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Halas, you were first.
Chair Kurtz, can you give us some examples or something similar within the area of where a tower's at that might be in a setting like this? Anything like that? Rough idea?
Yeah. The one that comes to mind is in a park in Eden Prairie. It's about the same height. I can't remember the name of the park, but it's very similar, you know, highly residential area. They picked the only, you know, institutional, non-residential area, kind of like we have done in the location that would work for Verizon.
And are there trees around that one also similar to what you're looking at here?
That one specifically, it's next to like a hockey rink with a warming house, so it's kind of made to emulate that warming house.
Yeah.
Another actually good example, one that we're building this year is at the Maple Grove Fire Station, and that also has the flush mounted, very similar to what this design is.
So the trees around this, just making an assumption here, they're probably 40, maybe 50 foot or better?
Yeah, probably between 30 and 50 foot, maybe.
So the tower's going to be another 30 feet above that?
Yeah, so it is screened quite a bit. That's, you know, one of the advantages of this location over the parking lot.
Okay.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Yeah, thank you. Chair Scanlon. Kurtz, I'm sorry. Goodness, I apologize. Quick question, you may have answered this, or maybe you didn't provide the answer, but I just want to be a little more specific. So my understanding is FCC sets emission limits.
Yes.
What are those limits and how are they measured? You know, is it microwatts per square centimeter? And what are the expected emissions for this tower?
Yeah, I don't have that specific information with me. We can provide that as a supplement, certainly. All I can say is that they regulate it at the federal level, and so they follow those guidelines.
Okay, so I guess we'll have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, we can definitely provide that, certainly.
Thank you. Chair Kurtz.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Chair Kurtz, I have a couple of questions here. The first is, what other options or locations do you consider besides this location?
Yeah, so like I said, there's six surrounding sites within a mile, two and a mile and a half, so you really have to be very pinpointed. You can't go even a quarter mile to one way or the other really can affect the efficacy of the tower. So, you know, we look first for co-locations, as we mentioned, and then the ordinance actually requires us to exclude any options within a half mile of where we're proposing. So in this case, there's no towers within that half-mile radius. We looked at buildings. There's nothing over four stories, and I think the only four-story building has a pitched roof, which precludes any antennas for the most part.
The other question I had was with the FAA lighting on top?
Will not be required.
It's not required here?
No. The FAA, the rule of thumb is 200 feet. Anything 200 feet and above. The only exceptions are if you're really near an airport or a flight path.
Okay, so that?
Will not be required.
Okay, because it was referenced in the drawing, and that's why I was going to ask the question about shielding or not with that. Then you had mentioned with the previous question that you had these additional locations with similar design aspects to what you're going to be doing here.
Sure.
Is that something, then, you can provide some photos to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Along with, for the next time?
Yeah.
And going back to my question about other locations, to the south of this location, it becomes more commercial versus residential about options that direction?
Yeah, so there's a, yeah, there's an existing site, and you may know it better than me. It's, let's see, it's about a mile south on Cedar Avenue, and the next, I can't remember what the street's named. Essentially, we can't go in that area. It would be too close.
I think it would be helpful, not just for us, but for the general public to have a better understanding of your site location, is maybe have something simple just to plot out where the existing ones are in your rationale for selecting this site more visually.
Yeah, we can present.
Narrative to it. That would be, I think, real helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mahalawald?
Chair Kurtz, I'd like to just, one or two follow-up questions to Commissioner Pruitt's questions with respect to the emissions and the concerns about them that have been raised by the emails and the letter. Understand that it's a federal issue established by the FCC. And I guess the question I have is, are there ongoing tests or monitoring of the emissions? I would imagine that the equipment itself has some sort of specification with regard to what those emissions might be, but does that change over time as the equipment is used, as the equipment ages? And is there any requirement to monitor the emissions, especially relative to residences or, you know, human occupation or use or proximity, I guess?
Sure. So the specific monitoring process I would have to bring as a supplement next time. It's continually adjusted as new technology comes out. The, you know, 5G is different than 4G, which is different than 3G, et cetera. So they do use different antennas. So they do use different antennas. You'll see them change on the towers. They look a little bit different now. So the FCC does readjust their, every time these new technologies comes out, Verizon and the various companies have to purchase new spectrum, which is new frequencies essentially, lanes on the highway of wireless technology that they can operate in. So at that point, you know, would be my guess that they change, they review their, review their emission guidelines.
Okay, and so just with respect to this being an FCC issue, these are the, like, the emissions are part of the considerations that the FCC would consider in determining whether to approve?
A license, exactly.
At this specific location?
At, at any location, correct.
Okay, so it's a site-specific permit review?
It is, yes. They're, they, they kind of buy the lane for, think of it as like the whole country's on a big highway. So they own this specific spectrum, that specific spectrum. It operates within, on all of their sites within those spectrums. That kind of makes sense.
Yeah, then that's, I just wanted to make sure that as it's an FCC issue, that the, you know, I guess, am I, is it my, is my understanding correct that the issues that have been expressed regarding the emissions coming from cell towers would be part of the FCC's consideration?
Exactly.
Determining whether or not to approve a?
Yeah, and that's, that's why you don't find them anymore in municipal ordinances, because that is, you know, city attorneys are aware that that's not something that can be, it's not within the municipal purview, or it's been litigated out in that way, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So at this time, I will ask for the public comments. Please come up to the podium to speak and address all comments and questions to Chair. Please, when you enter, or come up to the podium, that you state your name and your address, please.
Bear with me here a second. My name is Rich McCabe, and I live at 14365 Glendale Drive. If you could put up the, could you put up the screen again here?
Do you want to see the site plan?
Yes, please. Actually, yes, the picture of the?
Keep going.
Yes, right there. Could I use this? All right, as I heard the gentleman speak, the prior permit that was approved, this, the tower was here. Now it's here. As I said in my address, I live right here. And I'm here to speak against the, the tower, because I don't believe it really should be anywhere close to a residential area. You have, here we go. You have a town home association here, you've got a town home association there. You've got rental buildings here, you've got condominiums. You have a daycare center here and here with children. I'd like to read portions of the letter to the editor that I wrote and was published last Friday. This tower will be next to a town home community where I live, along with 67 other families. There are many other people living in private homes, rental condominiums, co-ops, childcare centers in the residential area north and west of the tower. The health risks of such a tower are well-known, especially for children. Some communities prohibit tower near schools. And just looking on the internet, I find that many times a community will prohibit a tower next to a school. And I have a whole list of them here. Sherburne, Massachusetts. No wireless antenna within 300, 3,000 feet of a school, within 1,500 feet of homes, and new wireless antennas in residential zones. Kopeck, New York. No wireless facilities may be within 1,500 feet from homes, schools, churches, or other buildings containing dwelling units. Saka, Oklahoma, well, I'm not going to read that one. Bedford, New Hampshire. No wireless antennas within 750 feet of the nearest residential zoned property. I could read more, but I think that tells the case. This tower too is, they say 86 feet tall. I heard it was 90 feet with another extension. It, it will be seen for miles. And I think it will devastate the home values of people in the town home area, in the other town homes. Many of these residents are elderly, and they depend on their home value for their next phase of living. And I really can't see why the church would actually put the tower, move it from the parking lot into this residential area. I'm concerned about people climbing the tower. I have a question too regarding the, the trees. Has the, the people involved discussed this with the gas company? There's a gas line running right here. And I believe that picture was an old picture, I'm not sure, because the gas company, the gas line company took down all these trees a year ago. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. We will get back with you on those questions unless. Blair, you don't have to come up now, you can just nod to me or not. But do you know why there was a change of location on that?
I do. The church has redevelopment.
Why don't you come on up?
The church has redevelopment plans related to the, I believe it's the building on the very south side to move it, expand it and move it to the west. So it would conflict with their plans.
Can you address whether or not it's 86 feet or 90?
He's referring to a lightning rod. So it's a small metal, four-foot metal piece that extends, and then there's a grounding system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Generally, we don't answer the questions the night of, so I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but?
And I, do you want me to address any of the other ones?
No, I think we'll get back with you on the rest of them. Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm sure, thank, Commissioners, thanks for the chance to speak. I guess I'm a representative of the other town home associations.
Name and address, please.
My name is Scott Narvason. I live at 14239 Glendale Cove Trail. So I'm in that stretch of town homes with the paler roofs just west of Bethel. So I represent, I'm on the board of the homeowners association, representing myself and 25 other homes in that association. I guess I don't speak as strongly against this proposal, but I just am here to find out information and take information back to my community. I share, Rich, I'm sorry, Rich, is that?
Yes.
Yeah. I share Rich is concerned about the pipeline. I forget who manages it. In the current day, we always call it the Magellan Pipeline. And it does run right between Pennock Forest, my association, and Pennock Shores, Rich's. And, you know, is adjacent to that, so I haven't heard engineering assurances that everyone has been involved and taken care of, you know, the issues there. So that'd be part of a question I'd hope to have answered. The height of the tower does seem to be a concern for us who live that close to it. You know, about twice the height of the tower will seem to be above the tree level that we can see from our, from our homes. And to the extent that's an eyesore and could reduce property values, it's a concern. One thing I did not see in the presentation was any kind of eye level view that might try to represent what this will look like. It seems like an architect engineer could offer, you know, a little more detailed view of what we'll see. And I, you know, the question was not answered directly with respect to this tower and the FCC's, you know, restrictions. And I believe Commissioner Mahowald answered or asked, well, how is this measured? And Blair did not answer whether someone ever comes out and decides and verifies that a, a tower is performing according to the, you know, restrictions of the FCC. Says, well, we build it, the government says what we're supposed to do. And I didn't hear a clear answer that we will verify that it is operating under the, you know, below the limits of what the FCC says is safe. I'd be more comfortable to know that that process was followed in a more direct way. Finally, my final concern is just wondering what the construction of this will look like? How long it will take, whether it all happens from the 143rd Street side? Or if there's any need to access streets that are associated with Pennock Forest or Pennock Shores? So I assume it's really quite close to 143rd. I assume all construction will happen from that side of the tower. But if there is any involvement with these neighboring associations, I would, I would like to hear it. So with that, I think those are the concerns that came to me as I was listening. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll follow up with those. Anyone else like to speak?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jim Peterson, and I live at 14378 Pennock Avenue. And I have a vision impairment, so I can't tell if that's on the picture or not. But it's, it's roughly two blocks, I would say, from where the tower would be built, Less As The Crow Flies. And I, I guess I would echo the, the comments of my friend and neighbor, Rich McCabe. There are, there, there's, you've heard from another town home association, and there, there's apartments, there's condominiums, there's more apartments. As we go north of there, then within a very close proximity, there's a co-op building. And, you know, Rich quoted several statutes from other cities that this would be prohibited based on its proximity to residential units. And 86 feet high, I'm pretty sure I'll be able to see it when I'm sitting out on my deck. And I would, I would hope that you can find a better, less intrusive spot for it. That's all I want to have to say, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir. Any others? There are no further comments.
I have a follow-up question for Cindy.
Sidney?
Sidney, excuse me.
Question from Commissioner Scanlon.
Madam Chair, Sidney, I have a couple of additional questions here, and you can, these can be brought to the next meeting for answering. The one is, is that we as a city have a number of limitations when it comes to cell phone towers and what we can push back on and not push back on. So if we could have kind of a, more of a narrative on that to help with especially the, the citizens to, to have, give them a better understanding of what we're dealing with here as a commission and the city as a whole in making a determination here. Because our somewhat, hands are tied somewhat in terms of, of what the, the federal government directs us in doing this. The other is, I did see you taking notes, is that if we can have some rendering, some, some sort to give more perspective of the taller height in relation to the neighborhood would be helpful. And then the other question is if you could have a discussion with the applicant is if there's any additional option for the tower to be put on the property other than with the closer proximity to the residential area, that it could be moved north a bit? Or what options might be there, if any? Because I know we're dealing with fall radiuses and so forth, and it, it makes it difficult in, especially in the, looks, the narrow area that they have to work within. So those are the three additional questions I had, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Kurtz and Commissioner Scanlon. We will look at all these questions and comments, and we can bring back answers at a future meeting.
Thank you, Sidney. So if there are no further comments, I will close this public hearing. It is the policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night as its public hearing. The Planning Commission will weigh all comments and information received tonight in its deliberations at future meetings. This item will continue to peer on future Planning Commission agendas until a recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to City Council. Thank you. Okay, it brings us to land use and action items, which there are none tonight. So it brings us to other business, and that is Tim Bonetti.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. It's with great pleasure that every year during our annual, our annual meeting, we present to you our annual report for 2024. We have some good information for you. Hopefully, you had a good chance to look at it in our packet. I'm going to go through it very quickly here, just for the audience's sake, but also for yours. Just to remind you who your names are, your, this is your current Commissioner list for 2024 and 2025. We did welcome Mr. Doug Alas, I believe, in early 2024. And we've also, I believe, we reappointed Ms. Mahowald and Mr. Pruitt.
Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you. See, even I get names mixed up, Mr. Scanlon, so apologize for that. So we happy to have you, and congratulations to the slate of officers who got elected tonight. We had four applications to, over the last year. We had comp plan amendments, which is not very common, zoning ordinance amendments, rezonance, conditional use permits too, subdivisions, preliminary class of eight, site plan reviews eight, vacations, et cetera. Good number for, for a year. Sorry, I didn't know that was in. So we have our keys to our Apple Valley's vision. Again, these are our keys that are listed in our, our current 2040 plan. This map is also critical or important to our, our, our planning for this area around Orchard Place. Again, this is just a conceptual plan that is actually being subject to a revise, a revision request made by the landowners, Rockport. And you'll probably going to see that in the next few meetings here, not tonight. Reminder, we started off the year with a very interesting request from Starbucks just at the corner of Cedar Avenue, 147th. They approved an amended conditional use permit to, if you remember, they needed to relocate their, their order board sign down, I think, further down the lane to give more space, spacing, leeway for the order to the, to the drive up or pickup window. And we did. And we, we did, that was approved, and we didn't see many issues at that. Our newest Les Schwab tires, good news, I believe we are about ready to issue a permit on them. This was the area in Orchard Place. This was about sixteen thousand square foot auto retail accessory store. If you remembered, initially, they wanted to come in with a, a plan to have a bunch of bays, you know, facing out. Our ordinance requires that in the RV zone, you can only have two bays or two doors. So they put those on the backside. So basically, you go in one side, you, the cars get parked inside, up on the lift, they get serviced, go right out the other door. So all interior services are, the servicing is all indoors, and there are no open bays in the, and, and the noise should be very well mitigated when it's all completely indoors. So Chick-fil-A, you do, most of you remember that? We approved a variance for an overhead canopy protection system. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary here. Hamshuck Beday forty-two. Some of you probably enjoyed some of that roasted sweet corn that Hamshuck provides every summer. This was an interim use permit for an outdoor corn roaster. Interim meaning it was only valid for, for last year. The expectation is that they're going to come back and ask for a PD amendment to allow this for a year round or a period of time as needed. Right now, they have yet to file for that application, but we anticipate that official permit should come in next, or this year. Recently, you just approved a new McDonald's restaurant right next to Chaffin Vet Clinic south of Health Partners. Again, the construction is expected to begin in 2025, with an expected opening maybe late 2025 or early 2026. Also under review, this was actually filed in 2024, is the Apple Valley Techno, Tech, Technology Park, not technological park, this is Orchard Place. Again, we've received the application. This is still in review with our staff. We have an updated plan set. I, I don't want to get into much information right now, tonight, because as you may recall, in the February fifth meeting, we presented this for just a cursory review or initial review. We had a lot of comments and concerns at night, and we hope to bring that back in the near future. Very proud of this project. This is a, if you remember the before and after, this is a, quite a transformation on Fire Station Number Two. Again, a new thirty thousand, just over a square foot, was started in early 2023, completed by August 2024, with a ribbon grand opening on September ten, 2024, which is that picture on the lower right. And a, a great event, a great looking building inside, so very proud of that. Our police operations support facility, this is off right on the west side or across the street from Eastview High School, south of the central maintenance facility, twenty-five thousand square foot, police operations building for fleet storage offices and meeting rooms. This construction did begin in mid-2024 and is nearing completion this year. Again, another great resource for our police, our police operations, because they're crammed in here at the City Hall, and this is, will be a great reliever for them. Secret Valley Learning Center, they had approved variance to authorize a slight encroachment for a new vestibule, which is a more secured vestibule because of the different clientele that they serve in here. So again, a great use of a variance, or a great use. We also approved the final plat easement vacation for the expansion improvement Dakota Ridge School. Not much there. These are big projects. This is Apple Valley High School Activity Center. We just approved an eighty-seven thousand square foot addition with construction beginning June 2025. You'll note the walkway and the underpass heading over to the Activity Center, also with the same one, little bit different design, of course, for Eastview High School. Again, you're looking at two buildings that match in with the appearance of the two schools. Again, approximately the same size, and these are, are, are part of a bonding project or bonding bill at the school secured a number of years ago. Redwood Park, we just approved a five thousand five hundred seventy-two square foot Activity Center with a swimming pool and all the activity around it. The work is expected to begin this spring with an expected reopening in June of 2026. Kelly Park, again, basically a redo of this park as well with a new, I should know this, pavilion, a splash pad, also a stage and a, a, a performance stage and green room, also some new playground equipment, new activity areas. And again, we expect this to come back to you very quickly. They still need a site plan review, and we hope to have that probably in the April or May agenda. Orchard Place Apartments, this has not been officially approved, but they are in the queue right now for site and building plan review. But you did authorize, or you did review a sketch plan of this, of a four-story, hundred and twenty-eight unit market rated apartment. You also later on approved a comp plan amendment to change that land use underneath that, that apartment site from C commercial to HD, high-density residential. So in a few weeks, you're going to see the official site and building plan for this project. I think you can be very well pleased with what they're bringing. Orchard Path, this is the Presbyterian Homes' third phase approval of a seventy-five unit continuum care facility, construction expected throughout 2025, 2026. Applewood Point, this was approval of a primary and final plat for a seven new single-family development along the front edge of the Applewood Point co-op building. And you may have seen a couple of permits or, or a couple of buildings are going up right now. Again, the co-op multifamily in these units in the front are strictly single-family detached. Oh, sorry, go back. Your variances, again, just reminder, your Chick-fil-A variance, your Secret Valley Learning Center, the Kellum variance was actually one that was originally applied for by Mr. Kellum at the Dominica Way. Their house had burned down a few years ago, severely damaged. They're looking to rebuild it. They came forward, I believe, once. They withdrew later because they figured out how to meet their setbacks. So that's ideal for any variance. You, you, you hope the variance is the last effort or last straw, so to speak, but if you can figure out a way to, and, and that's where we work with them, or work with applicants. We try to work with them, give them options, and here was a, a great opportunity where we, it, it worked out for their benefit. Also, McDonald's had a variance for that site, for the required setback for a Class Two restaurant from residential. Much to some members of our, our council, we did have to pass a cannabis ordinance. This is state mandated, and this is a, we now have a new approved countywide ordinance that provides for zoning regs and standards for those cannabis businesses. We do now have a cannabis retail business buffer map, which is available on our, our city website. It's a very handy and useful map for, not only for us as planners, but also for those individuals or companies looking to open up a business in the community. We do have one application in review right now, and you're probably going to see a related application to a new cannabis business coming in very, very soon. Our store order management requirements, again, this is more of a housekeeping measure to clean up some issues with the MPC, new, new rules and, and requirements. We had a good year for permit activity. We had four new buildings under the commercial industrial and issued ten major construction permits with nearly twelve million dollars in valuation. We also had twenty new single-family detached homes, approximately seven point two million new value, twenty new townhomes attached to all the units, primarily in the Eagle Point Townhome Division subdivision, approximately five point four million there, and over, almost over eighteen hundred permits in residential additions and alterations. And again, looking at this number thirty-four million dollars in reinvestment, that's great. That's, those are the numbers we like to see, both the additions, the alterations. And that, that can be just a, a simple remodeling, an addition, a deck, a garage, whatever, but those are great investments in the community. Reminder, we also talked about our police operate ops facility, Fire Station Number Two, and the four new existing school projects with seven point five million right now. Economic development, in August 2024, staff did submit for, with our Dakota County CDA friends, a redevelopment investment grant, which is commonly referred to as a RIG grant. We did request twenty-five thousand dollars for water utility plan study in Times Square Mall. Times Square Mall is very well, is, is, is underserved by current water needs or water system, and we were looking to have a study done that would provide for a feasibility study to improve that, not only for them, but for our surrounding utilities as well. We're hoping that that study will, will, will take place very, very soon. And in following that, a subsequent RIG application could be applied for to help Times Square and maybe even city provide for those upgrades. We also received two, two grants for a Phase One assessment of our two gaslight site and the A sixty-six sites. We were pleased to know that those Phase One environmental site assessments came up with nothing, which is what we're always hopeful. Our open to business program, some of you may be aware of this, but this is an open to business program. It's a, it's a private consultant or a contracted consultant that's run through the Dakota County CDA, and they, this consultant biz, or corporation, they handle or help entrepreneurs, new startup companies who are looking to either start a business or kind of, maybe they're in a lull and they're looking for a, a business plan update. Natalie Mosel, she's our, our great consultant, and she has provided a, a immeasurable level of service to our community. As you can see, over thirty percent of the total hours that she logged were towards Dakota, into Dakota County, were towards Apple Valley, which is remarkable. That means there's a lot of people that want to come here. And you, you can see a pizza restaurant, pickleball, fish and chips restaurant, bubble tea, driving schools. Those are a, a great assortment of businesses that we'd love to see in here. The Spice House Grocery currently going into Times Square. Ethiopian Market, I believe, is also being under consideration. Of the thirty-three businesses served by Natalie, seventy, seventy percent were BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color owned. Fifty-one percent were women owned, and forty percent were low income. Again, those are the, those are the, the population of groups that we want to serve. We also helped facilitate three loans, or they did, fifty thousand loan to a startup bubble tea, forty-two thousand for an existing pizza business, and thirty-three thousand five hundred to a food business, our mobile food business. We, again, this is something that we are always excited about, our ribbon cutting and groundbreaking. We had over seventeen last year, one groundbreaking at the police ops building. Again, these are just some cute pictures we add to show, you know, how great and how welcoming we are to the community. We also did a ribbon cutting on this October twenty-fourth with city and Dakota County officials at the North, North Creek Greenway Trailhead, located just inside Cory Point Park. This is a fourteen-mile system that connects Apple Valley, Eagan, Lakeville, Farmington, and Empire Township. It also has a great destination or critical links to the Lebanon Hills Park and the Minnesota Zoo. And you'll note the excitement of Commissioner Mary Hammond rolling in that picture.
She'll love you for that one.
Yeah, that is not fake. She is super excited, and I think she just loved to hold the big scissors. Very quickly, I know I introduced her last year at, at my report, but I want to do it again. Officially, she is, did make her one-year probation, just almost. Our Sidney Stroing, she is our, our phenomenal planner. I'm grateful for her for helping out after losing our city planner and our other city planner. So she's been great, and we're very happy to have her. For other staffing news, just want to let you know, we, we have closed our applications for our Planner One and our City Planner. We hope to have our interview starting for the Planner One next week, City Planner to follow very, very soon. So we're excited.
Good.
Sandwich report, after thirty years of service, former planner Kath, City Planner Kathy Bodman retired, and here's some pictures of her cake and her, her awarding of the, what we refer to as the, the Apple Award and the Key of the City. I don't know if she got a key, but the apple's good enough. And Kathy was very humbled by this. We had a great party afterwards, and she stops in once in a while, and she's sorely missed. As indicated, we promoted Alex Sharp to that planner position, and he left, so that's why we're, we're, we're in the pickle we are now. But here's a great picture of our staff. This is Raquel, Ben, Sidney, Dufus number one in the back, Kath, Mary, Alex, and Brianna. And this is a great team, and we're going to build on it again. So with that, by simple motion, you can approve the report, and we will authorize city staff to present this to the council. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Whew, you guys have been busy.
Here we are.
So good job for the city staff and great job to the commissioners for working on all that also. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schindler motioned, and Commissioner Scanlon seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Did you want to leave before you gave the Apple Valley bike and? You're going to take this one. Of course you are.
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, I just wanted to give a brief update on our Apple Valley Bike and Pedestrian Plan Update. So we have received a grant to complete an update to our Bike and Ped Plan from the Statewide Health Improvement Partnership, which is kind of managed by Dakota County. And so our, our original pet and bike plan was created in 2010, so it's been quite a few years, and we'd like to revisit that, especially now that we have some grant funding. So our city consultant, HKGI, is helping us to write the plan update, but we wanted to come before you tonight, or I wanted to come before you tonight, give you an idea of the schedule and the timeline for the project, and just let you know when we'll be back to, to present some findings for you. So, you know, the, the original 2010 Bike Walk Apple Valley Plan, like I said, created in 2010, had great community engagement involvement from sort of two different groups primarily. So, you know, a staff group that, that reviewed a lot of the technical information as well as a task force. So what we're doing, again, in this update, is we, we have a task force that we've assembled with our, our chair and our, and one of our commissioners to participate with, with other, other key staff members and, and public engagement folks to help review and guide the plan update. So just some questions that we have up there that, that this task force, as well as city staff, are going to help answer. Right, what's relevant from 2010? What can we, what can we reuse? You know, how, how do we use it today? How do we use the 2010 plan in current day? What worked well and what, what didn't work well? So those questions that, that we'll run through the task force as well as our city staff, and then we'll bring forward, you know, something for the commission at large to weigh in on. So once we have, have some guidance for that. So as I mentioned, the, the task force consists of quite a, quite a variety of stakeholders or invested community members, so it, it will be well represented and we'll get a good amount of community engagement, which is a goal of the city and a goal of, of the grant funding to make sure that we're reaching hard-to-reach populations with this. You know, we, we've sort of workshopped this mission statement, and, and I just wanted to throw it up in front of you. So you, what, what we're working off of is, you know, the Bike Ped Plan Update will serve as a tool for the city of Apple Valley to continue to enhance mobility, safety, health, and quality of life for its residents. The Plan Update will serve as a roadmap towards creating and maintaining a connected and equitable transportation network. So that's kind of the guiding principle, and as the task force, staff members, and then this commission, other commissions, and City Council view it, we'd like to keep, keep that in mind. And, and lastly for you, just, just a schedule update. So, you know, depicted here, we're, we're on a relatively accelerated timeline with our grant funding, so this, this project needs to be completed by the end of May of this year. And so one thing that the schedule shows that we've adjusted is that community engagement we extended from, from the end of February kind of to the end of March. And so if you guys have received your city spring newsletter yet, maybe you have, maybe you haven't, the Bike Ped Plan will have a link to a survey that you could participate, and anyone watching from home or in the audience could participate on, you know, the recreational use of trails, sidewalks, and bike facilities, and we, we want to continue to collect that input. So having that go out with the spring newsletter- So having that go out with the spring newsletter, we wanted to extend that community engagement. So tonight, like I mentioned, we're just here to give you an update on the schedule. But, but in, maybe in the middle, towards late April, we'll, we'll be back with, with a few questions for you to weigh in on, which, which will be great to have your input as we, as we put together the plan update. So our next public appearance for staff on this plan will be at the Home and Garden Show on April 12th. So if you're, if you find yourself there and you want to come say hi, we'll have, we'll have something set up. I'm not sure that I could commit to treats yet, but, but we might have something to encourage people to participate in that. So with that, like I mentioned, we're looking to complete this plan update by the end of May of this year. And that's, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. What a nice added bonus to be an Apple Valley resident, right? To have something like that? Great. Tim Benetti, upcoming schedule and other updates?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So your next meeting will be in a few weeks, on Wednesday, March 19th, followed by the other Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025. Our council meeting, March 13th and 27th respectively. So we were hoping that you can make those meetings. Let us know if you can't. Otherwise, I have no further updates.
Thank you.
Move adjourned?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion being by Commissioner Schindler and second by Commissioner Scanlon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This meeting is adjourned.